2018, please call the roll.
Trustee Husk.
Here.
Trustee Valdez.
Here.
Trustee Wallace.
Here.
Trustee Butler.
Here.
Trustee Nichols.
Here.
Here Hill.
Here. At the record show of form is present, would you all please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or deletions to the agenda? If motion is approved.
All moved.
Motion by trustee Nichols, second by trustee Valdez. If motion is second, any corrections, additions, deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved, is written. Okay, we have our council meeting minutes from April 23rd, 2018 up for approval. Any corrections or clarifications? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Motion by trustee Butler, second by trustee Husk. If motion is second, any corrections, clarifications in the meeting minutes? Again, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes are approved. We have expenditures tonight of $1,032,660.12. Some of those larger items in there are our CLC Java for our Fresh Lake Michigan water, about $138,000. Lake County Public Works for the sewer to take the water back away, about $271,000. That's for a two-month period. We also have a redevelopment agreement, about $175,000. There's a bunch of other items that the board reviewed, the staff have all reviewed, and anyone have any cross? Questions to any of the items that are being paid tonight? Is there a motion to approve?
All moved.
Motion by trustee Wallace.
Second.
Second by trustee Butler. We have a motion to second, any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Butler.
Aye.
Trustee Nichols.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valdez.
Aye.
Trustee Wallace.
Aye.
That's approved. We have no ramifications this evening, so move on our committee reports. Any trustees have any committee reports?
I do, mayor, thank you. As far as Swalco, I just want to remind everybody that we have two locations now for recycling. One is the main recycling place in Graves Lake Public Works at 585 Berry Avenue. They take a myriad of different things. And we also have our own recycling, which is on Sunset Drive just south of Hawthorne at the sanitary plant entrance. Our locations are open from 7:30 to 3:00 PM, Monday to Friday, and 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday. The Graves Lake area is 7 to 3:30, Monday to Friday, and 8:00 AM to noon on Saturday. Also, I want to remind everybody when it comes to your plastic shopping bags and things like that, please do not put them in the recycling stream. They really gum up the work, so to speak. They bind up all the mechanisms for the recycling machines. So as far as grocery bags go, just put them into the regular garbage stream, and that'll make everybody happier, and they won't have to work so hard to keep everything working. Also, I have one other thing, as far as we may be looking at our share in, how do I put this, the, looking at the, what's going into the recycling, and the clean recycling versus dirty recycling. Swalco is looking at doing a shared program with our village whereby they'll open up, they'll be doing checks on the recycling bins. So if they come by and they see that there's things that are in the recycling that shouldn't be in the recycling, they're, they have reminders that can go right on to the bins themselves to let us know what it is, or why that, why they would not normally pick that up. So keep that in mind, you may see that coming down the stream pretty shortly. And recycle first, trash last. I also have one other thing, mayor. I just want to have everybody put it on their, mark the calendars for Beach Fest, which is July 12th through the 15th, with July 12th being the carnival only that night, and then July 13th, 14th, and 15th will be our full festival with our live bands, food vendors, regular vendors, and among other things that come out between now and then. So mark your calendars, come out to Beach Fest, you'll have a great time.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
It sounds like the waste management recycling issue is more of an educational drive to help educate our residents as far as what can go in the recycle stream, what can't, to clean up the containers, not to throw them in there half full of junk or any liquids in them, make sure you have everything out, a general education.
Correct.
That's great. Any of the trustees have any announcements tonight?
Yes, mayor, I'd like to just say thank you to the village staff, Dave, Kevin, and everyone else that helped with the American English concert last Saturday night. Went over a great success, as it has the last few times we've done it. And also to remind everyone to keep, keep an eye out on the schedule for the Wednesday night break on the lakes, which will be coming up this summer.
Always an adorable evening, yes, thank you. Anything else? Okay, a couple of our items under mayor's report tonight. First, we have the fiscal year 2017 CAFRA Award presented by Nikki Larson. Nikki, please come to the podium.
Good evening. I'm honored to be here this evening on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association to present the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the Village of Round Lake Beach. This is the first time ever that this village has received this award. The Certificate of Achievement Program has been in operation since 1946. The purpose of this program is to encourage and assist governments to prepare financial reports of the highest quality, and for the benefit of its citizens, and for other parties with vital interest in the government finances. The program has gained widespread recognition as the premier indicator of excellence in governmental accounting and financial reporting. To earn this award, the village had to substantially conform to the program's demanding criteria, which go well beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles. Program participants submit copies of their financial reports to the Certificate of Achievement Program for an in-depth review and evaluation. These reports are reviewed by two members from an impartial panel of government finance officers, certified public accountants, educators, and others with specialized expertise and experience in governmental accounting. The receipt of this award reflects the professionalism and commitment of numerous individuals, as well as many hours of hard work, especially in your finance department. It also reflects a high degree of dedication and leadership on the part of this village board. Therefore, it is my privilege on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association to present Kevin and the Village of Round Lake Beach with this award. Congratulations.
Well, thank you, Nikki. Kevin, want to say a few words?
Yeah, if you don't mind, that'd be great. First of all, thank you, Nikki, for making your way over here and doing the presentation. Then also, I'd like to thank the board for the leadership, along with the village administrator, who provide that advice on department heads to do these kind of work and allow for us to develop these kind of programs, so thank you.
Thank you. It's one of those programs we've been working on for well over 10 years now, slowly but surely getting our finances in better shape and in better shape. And we've finally the point where we receive the award. We thank Nikki for coming out tonight and presenting that, and again, kudos to you, Kevin and Dave, and all the rest of the staff for all the hard work to make sure we could achieve that, that fine goal. Thank you. The board doesn't mind, I think we'll go to item three, the National Military Appreciation Month, where we have a full audience here. If you can have our clerk please read that.
Sure. Whereas the rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness given by God and enumerated in our Declaration of Independence, secured by the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, and enjoyed by every citizen of the United States are a direct result of the bloodshed and continued vigilance given by the members of the United States Armed Forces throughout the history of our great nation. And whereas the sacrifice, sacrifices made by the members of the United States Armed Forces and the family members that support them have preserved the liberties that have enriched the village, and whereas it is our duty to preserve the legacy of these brave Americans, and it remains our duty to work for peace, freedom, and security, may we always strive to uphold the founding principles they died defending, let their legacy continue to inspire us, and let the solemn lesson of service and great sacrifice be taught to future generations of Americans. Whereas the United States Congress in 2004 passed a resolution proclaiming May as National Military Appreciation Month, calling all Americans to remember those who gave their lives in defense of freedom, and to honor the men and women of all of our armed services who have served and are now serving our great country together with their families. And whereas the months of May and June were selected for this display of patriotism, because during these months we celebrate Victory in Europe Day, Military Spouse Day, Loyalty Day, Armed Forces Day Week, National Day of Prayer, Memorial Day, Navy Day, Army Day, and Flag Day. Now therefore, I, Richard H. Child, the mayor of the Village of Round Lake Beach, do hereby proclaim the period of May 1st through June 14th, 2018, as a special time to show appreciation for our military and proclaim it as National Military Appreciation Month in the Village of Round Lake Beach, and encourage all citizens to join me in showing our gratitude by the appropriate display of flags and ribbons during the designated time.
Thank you. There's no greater respect than for those people that go out and protect us on the front lines, mostly overseas, can never imagine what they endure during the times of war, especially. We hold them all a huge debt of gratitude. We've remained free for all these years, and I hope we continue to remain free for a lifetime and many more lifetimes. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by trustee Nichols.
Second.
Second by trustee Butler. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved. Okay, it's time now for swearing in the new officers. Always an enjoyable time.
Thank you, mayor, members of the board. I'd like to call up Officer Paige Burr, please. Officer Burr was born and raised in the state of Florida. She began her career in law enforcement in 2006, and where she worked for 10 years for the Largo Police Department in Florida. While serving at Largo PD, she served as a hostage negotiator on a crisis intervention team. She is also certified instructor as part of the crisis intervention team. Officer Burr moved to Lake County last summer when her husband, Adam, was assigned to active Coast Guard duty and stationed in Wellmet. Officer Burr has two young sons, Jackson and Taylor.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Paige Burr.
I, Paige Burr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
If you want to come up behind her and take a picture. You can come up behind her if you want, take pictures. No?
It's cool.
I, Paige Burr.
I, Paige Burr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Police officer.
Police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome to the village. Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Next, I'd like to call up Officer Jessica Gill. Jessica Gill grew up in Waukegan, Illinois, and attended Waukegan High School. In 2017, he graduated from the University of Wisconsin-Parkside with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Shortly after, he began his career as a correctional officer with Lake County, and then accepted a position as a police officer at our agency. He now resides in Lindenhurst with his girlfriend, Ally, and her brother Jake, who are both in attendance here tonight.
I, Jessica Gill.
I, Jessica Gill.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of police officer.
The duties of the office of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to my best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next, I'd like to call up Officer Alden Upovic, please. Officer Upovic is 27 years old, and he's married to Melina, and they are expecting their first child, a daughter. Most of his life was spent living in Chicago, and he graduated from the University of Illinois at Chicago with a bachelor's degree, bachelor's of science degree in biological sciences. He graduated from the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy in September 2017, and he's here accompanied with his wife today.
I, Alden Upovic.
I, Alden Upovic.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of police officer.
Duties of the office of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome. Good, we signed both of those. This one's yours.
And finally, I'd like to call up Officer John Bartholomew, please. Officer Bartholomew graduated from Colorado State University with a bachelor of science in criminal justice and a certificate in emergency management. He spends much of his free time in the outdoors, hunting and fishing. His short-term goals while being at the Round Lake Beach Police Department include becoming a member of the NIPIS team and being involved with emergency management functions within the village. Tonight, he is accompanied by his father, John, his mother, Ellen, girlfriend Courtney, and her parents, Patty and Rob.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, John Bartholomew.
I, John Bartholomew.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of police officer.
The duties of the office of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
This is correct.
Okay. Just need you to sign those. This one's for you to keep, welcome.
Thank you, Deputy Chief, appreciate that. It's always nice to welcome new officers or any new staff to the Village of Round Lake Beach. We have a highly dedicated police department here, and I'm sure you'll fit right in. Some guys will train you great. I know you all came here for that part of it. If you want to stick around and listen to the board meeting, you're welcome to do that, but you weren't hurt, I feel this, so I'll leave, it's okay.
You're out of here.
Pilot? Is that a pilot? Is he a pilot? Is he a pilot? The guy who sent you in his name? Was it an apple that's on a white shirt?
Is there a clerk's report tonight?
There is not, thank you.
Moving on to items of business, then. We have item A. Is a resolution authorizing the Village of Round Lake Beach to participate in 911 Consolidation Governance Committee. Going to be investing $10,000 in a 911 consolidation study with several other communities in Lake County to see if we can improve service and speed of delivery of emergency services. Right now, we are very quick and efficient with our police department, because it all goes through the same 911 center, but the fire departments kind of have patchwork throughout Round Lake Beach. And if somebody calls 911, it goes to the CENTCOM Center, but if they're in Lake Villa or the Graves Lake District, it has, that call has to be transferred. And so we're working with the other communities, see if we can get a multi-jurisdictional, a larger multi-jurisdictional dispatch center that we have right now, that will help to speed delivery of services and also allow us to improve the communications equipment we have, because we have a larger facility, a larger group of people, can afford better technology. And new technology is coming out with the next generation 911 system that they're developing right now, and they're going to be expensive, and we're looking for ways to, again, improve service, and if we can save money, great, but making the services even better is puts a priority here. Is there a motion to approve?
All moved.
Second? Motion by trustee Valdez. Second by trustee Nichols. We have a motion to second, any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valdez. Trustee Wallace.
Aye.
Trustee Butler.
Aye.
Trustee Nichols.
Aye.
That's approved. Item B, is a resolution declaring certain vehicles and bicycles as surplus equipment. We do recover different items and crimes, and sometimes we can't find the owners of the property. Bicycles are a big example of that. Unfortunately, people don't have the registration information, they don't know anything about the bike, other than it was gray or blue or something like that. So a lot of times, we don't have owners to give the property back to, so we have to auction some of those items off. We also have finished property, in this case, a couple of vehicles that are no longer needed by the village. They're either old, or they need to be replaced for other particular reasons, they'll be auctioned off also. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Butler. Second by trustee Husk. A motion is second, any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Valdez. Trustee Wallace.
Aye.
Trustee Butler.
Aye.
Trustee Nichols.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
That's also approved. Item C, is an ordinance in section 5-3-5, comma, I, comma, 1, of the village code regarding no parking requirements on school days. Unfortunately, we found a typo in one of the names on the, in the ordinance of one of the roads, so we need to change that and update it, otherwise, there's no changes to the ordinance whatsoever. Is there a motion to approve?
All moved.
Motion by trustee Wallace.
Second.
Second by trustee Butler. We have a motion to second, any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Wallace.
Aye.
Trustee Butler.
Aye.
Trustee Nichols.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valdez.
That's also approved. Item D, is a resolution authorizing a third extension of the contract of the conveyance of the property, commonly known as Zero Circle Drive, Round Lake Beach, Illinois. We have a developer that's interested in trying to find a way to market building over one of our detention ponds, right over the top of it. This is going to take a little bit of extra work, extra engineering to market it. He's asking for another extension for about a year total, I believe, in order for him to keep on trying to research this and find people that might be interested in building over the top of detention pond. All the storage would still be there underneath the building, and so it would be a great use of the land, and it cover up the, kind of, not so nice-looking holes that are out there in the middle of our downtown business district. We did discuss that our committee meeting is probably the last extension we'll give, if he's not able to complete it this time around, that it's just not going to be feasible for him to do, and we will not extend it any, any longer. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve?
All moved.
Motion by trustee Husk.
Second.
Second by trustee Wallace. Any questions? And there is actually absolutely no cost to all the village for this, it's just something that we are having an agreement with him, he can market it and try that out, and he has access to the property if he needs to. We have a motion to second, any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Butler.
Aye.
Trustee Nichols.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valdez. Trustee Wallace.
Aye.
That's also approved. Item E, is a resolution authorizing appropriation of funds for environmental mosquito management program in an amount not to exceed $41,275. We do pre-treat our wetlands and ponds to prevent mosquito larvae from maturing, and also spray several times in summer to kill the adult mosquitoes. Unfortunately, that's to kill all the mosquitoes, we still do get mosquito bites, but they'd be a lot worse without that. We do this in conjunction with the other communities around us, in the townships, so we get the biggest bang for the buck and cover the most area possible. Unfortunately, probably heard on TV that the mosquitoes also travel with the winds, so we get some high winds, they get blow in, who knows, maniac in an evening. So we're always going to have mosquitoes, but if we can knock them down a bit and help keep the disease from spreading through the area of Round Lake Beach, we want to make sure we do that. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve? Motion by trustee Valdez.
Second.
Second by trustee Nichols. We have a motion to second, any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Nichols.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valdez. Trustee Wallace.
Aye.
Trustee Butler.
Aye.
That's also approved. Item F, is a resolution authorizing an improvement in the word of contract to Hydroware Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $30,200. We're doing maintenance and repairs in some of our lift station pumps to ensure they perform as needed. Today's rain was a good case for that, they had a lot of water that came down very quickly. Make sure those pumps do perform, they're able to move as much water as possible, so people don't have backups or flooding in their areas. Even with all the work we do, and all the pumps we have, we still have issues occasionally when the water, when the rain comes down that hard and that quick, there's not anywhere for the water to go fast enough. That's always with the pumps, sometimes it's just typical stormwater drainage. This is more your, our sanitary sewers. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve?
All moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Wallace, second by trustee Butler. We have a motion to second, any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Wallace.
Aye.
Trustee Butler.
Aye.
Trustee Nichols.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valdez.
Aye.
That's also approved. Item G, is a resolution authorizing a proven in a word of contract to Robinson Heating and Cooling in an amount not to exceed $21,000. We're doing our routine maintenance on our HVAC systems throughout the village, and also replacing a 25-year-old boiler out of our Public Works Department. It'll be more efficient, and it's 25 years old, so it's, had a lot of maintenance issues lately, but it's time to definitely replace it. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
Motion by trustee Husk.
Second.
Second by trustee Nichols. We have a motion to second, any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valdez. Trustee Wallace.
Aye.
Trustee Butler.
Aye.
Trustee Nichols.
Aye.
That's also approved. Item H, is an ordinance regarding expenditures for pavement markings. We are part of the Lake County Municipal League's joint purchasing program. We've done it for many years now, we've saved a lot of money in the process by working with other communities to do one big bid, and get a much better price. We, last year, we had a two-year contract with a company, they asked for 10% increase this year, so we went out and did a rebid, and came back to about the same price that we were supposed to pay originally. So we're very glad we were able to do that. This has been a super program, and it saved the village, all the villages, involved a lot of money. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Butler.
Second.
Second by trustee Nichols. Second by trustee Nichols. We have a motion to second. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Valdez.
Aye.
Trustee Wallace.
Aye.
Trustee Butler.
Aye.
Trustee Nichols.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
That's also approved. Item I. It's a resolution authorizing approval in a word of contract to conserve FS, an amount not to exceed $13,000. We're continuing the renewal, rejuvenation of land over the Culture Center, and we use that for a lot of different festivals and events throughout the course of the year. That's come a long way in the last couple of years, and we'll continue to improve with the soil management of it. And no matter what we do, we'll always have to have a certain amount of management because of all the use that park gets over there, which is great. That's what, that's what's all there for, is for a lot of the use, but it will cost the money to maintain it. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve? Motion by trustee Valdez.
Second.
Second by trustee Wallace. We have a motion to second. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Wallace.
Aye.
Trustee Butler.
Aye.
Trustee Nichols.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valdez.
Aye.
That's also approved. Item J. It's a resolution authorizing the acquisition of certain property located within the Village of Round Lake Beach, 1127 and 1129 Lakeshore Drive. We're going to be buying the last house, separating into two sections, the lakefront park. This will open up another area for our residents to enjoy. This is a project we've been working on for, I want to say, probably 15 years now, piece by piece. The different houses have come up for sale. We've purchased them, torn them down, and made it more park area. Our community has grown so much over the last 20 years, we really needed more room at our lakefront park. It gets a lot of use in the summertime, which, again, that's what it's there for. It's great to see the residents all down there. This will give us even more room in the future. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve? Motion by trustee Valdez.
Second.
Second by trustee Wallace. We have a motion to second. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Butler.
Aye.
Trustee Nichols.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valdez. Trustee Wallace.
Aye.
That's also approved. Item K. It's a resolution regarding the release of closed session minutes. We review our closed session minutes about once every six months, according to state law, and release any minutes that no longer need to be kept confidential. Today, we're releasing, what is it, seven or eight different closed session minutes that no longer need to be kept confidential due to the nature of what was discussed. Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Motion by trustee Wallace.
Second.
Second by trustee Butler. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Nichols.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valdez.
Aye.
Trustee Wallace.
Aye.
Trustee Butler.
Aye.
That's also approved. Item L. An ordinance granting a special use permit for a digital sign at Zero Hook Drive, Round Lake Beach, Illinois. We're going to be replacing our digital sign at the Culture Center with an upgraded model. That one's getting pretty old now, and the newer model will allow us to do more advertising and bring more recognition to the Culture Center as people are driving down Hook Drive here. So it should be a nice improvement. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Motion by trustee Nichols. Second by trustee Husk. We have a motion to second. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valdez.
Aye.
Trustee Wallace.
Aye.
Trustee Butler.
Aye.
Trustee Nichols.
Aye.
That's also approved. That was our last item of business. It's now open to public participation. Anyone who has a question or a comment for the board, please come to the microphone, and either state your comment or ask your question. Well, thank you all for being here tonight. We do not have any executive session, so we